Now we're getting to open session. The time is 7:24 PM. And we want to thank you all for joining us tonight. We'll get started with our ceremonials, beginning with our pledge allegiance. Who's presenting? The colors are presented tonight by Kingwood High School. Thank you. Since 1946, musicians from all over the world have gathered in Chicago to learn from each other and from clinicians at the Midwest Clinic International Band Orchestra and Music Conference. Very few are selected to actually perform during the conference. I am very proud to share that one of the elite groups invited to perform this year is from UMBLE ISD, our very own Creekwood Middle School's percussion ensemble. Creekwood is the first middle school group from UMBLE ISD selected, and Creekwood is the only middle school percussion ensemble to be featured at the conference this year. Jonathan Fry, will you please play tonight's inspiring moments?
Two years ago, I had this really good beginning percussion class. Some of these kids were in sixth grade. They would ask us for music, more music. They wanted more music to practice. They wanted more of a challenge. So I decided that this would be a good year, last year would be a good year to start a percussion ensemble, once they were seventh graders. And I did have the intention of submitting to competition.
They worked really hard. They came in after school all the time.
I practiced one or two hours a day because I knew if we wanted to make it into this competition, it's going to take the work. And I also know I can't let my team down because it's not just me here.
We've been practicing our butts off. We've been working day and night, all of us.
And we got a CD together and submitted it to Midwest.
So I didn't really think we would win anything, just because it was our first year to have a percussion ensemble.
After that, we just waited a couple of months. I remember the day they announced it on the PA.
Then Mr. Winnicky tells us to stand up. He says, "Hasten to shem and stand up," and then everyone else, "stand up." And he says that, "Do you know the Super Bowl? Do you know the World Series? Do you know the World Cup?" Well, these people, they got the World Cup, the Super Bowl, the World Series of music.
Recently, I've been doing some research on the Midwest Conference, and I've just been blown away at how much stuff is there and how great of an honor it is to go there and perform.
The level of music that these kids are playing is absolutely astonishing. These are, some of these are college-level pieces that even Ariel worked on when she was in college. And they're not just getting through them, they're playing them at a very high sophisticated level. And this is a world stage. People from all over the place are going to be introduced to UMBLE ISD through this group, and I can't think of a better way to showcase the district.
I have been impressed with how they, the hard work and dedication that they've shown. As far as I'm concerned, they're leaders now. And the experience that they've gained from this process, this whole experience, they're going to be leaders in the future, whether it's in high school, in college, and beyond.
They decided that they wanted to go and they wanted to create a percussion ensemble. That took personal accountability, innovative leadership, and group collaboration. They set their designs on a goal, and they figured out what they had to do to get there, and they made it happen. And boy, did they make it happen in a big way. I think they are just an amazing group of kids.
It definitely takes a commitment, along with the talent of them and the support of the school and families, to make this happen.
What they're gaining now is going to, they're going to carry it for the rest of their lives.
Think of this like as a scene in a movie that you just watch as a kid, but like you, this time you are the movie. You're not just the kid watching it.
I'd like to recognize some of the stars of our video. Principal Walt Winnicky is here. So are we going to have a picture, Jonathan? Are we going to bring folks up? No? Okay. Just, okay, just wave, Walt. That'd be great. Ms. Missy Allen, head band director, is here. And Director of the Percussion Ensemble, Ms. Ariel Gammons, is here. I'm going to ask Ms., okay, yes. I'd like to ask Ms. Gammons to introduce the students with her tonight.
Why don't you guys come up here when she calls your name, just so everybody can see you in the audience? And we can see you on TV, too, on the YouTube. And just stand up in front of us right here.
Absolutely.
Angela Monchun, Liz Gett, down there, take a picture with them.
Angela.
Walt's on.
Walt's.
You've never been to a shot.
Somebody was going to be pictures.
Bring the video, come on. This is here, see?
Walt, you need a balance.
Maybe she goes, "No, I heard."
Right.
You might be liquidating.
Okay.
Don't face him. We are going to take photos.
Oh, thank you. That's a great idea.
All right, off three. One, two, three. Just for you, go look here real quick and hold the other. One more time, off three. One, two, three. Look at all these smiles.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Story trip.
Kid in the movie.
Congratulations.
Love it.
Good job.
Good job, Walt.
I'll just get to watch and listen.
Oh, right?
Yeah.
Good job, guys.
Appreciate it.
And I'm on the clock, so I'm going to say this fast. So I know at this moment, I'm supposed to say how, how proud I am. And I am proud, but I'm more than that. I'm in awe of what these students have been able to accomplish and what Ms. Gammons, our director, has, was able to do to lead and teach these kiddos. So I want you to be in awe, too. So I am inviting all of you, and even those folks watching at home on TV, to our send-off performance this Sunday afternoon. Because think about it, this kind of opportunity doesn't come around very often. I mean, the Astros, they're world champions, and the teams that they played were from the United States. Schools and musicians from all over the world competed to get invited to this event. Our percussion group is the only middle school group that received an invitation. So if you missed attending a World Series game at Minna May Park, you can come to Kingwood Park this Sunday, Kingwood Park High School, 4 o'clock, and you can see the best in the world perform. Thank you.
Mr. Winnicky, did you tell us what time?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, okay. Just wanted to confirm. All right. Usually, we have super staffers now, but we will actually not have any of those tonight. And our next ones will be announced at the February board meeting. So that is the end of our commendations and recognitions for this evening. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. That brings us to our item F. 3F is our questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. And we have this evening, the Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union.
UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees, I would like to recognize Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union for their ongoing support of UMBLE ISD. So joining us, if you'll come up and join me, as I call your name, Julia Arsenault, Jamison McCott, and Eddie Vanilla. So if y'all wouldn't mind coming and standing here a little awkwardly for a few minutes while I talk about you. So for several years now, Gulf Coast has demonstrated their support of educators by sponsoring events, volunteering on committees, and donating resources to help meet needs of our schools. So here are just a few of the ways that Gulf Coast has demonstrated this support. They've sponsored the district's employee recognition program, Super Staffers. They've sponsored gala tickets for all 10 Teacher of the Year finalists and their guests. They've sponsored professional development trainings in the summer, as well as leadership trainings. And then just last week, Gulf Coast surprised 12 of our UMBLE ISD employees that were affected by Hurricane Harvey and gave them $100 Visa gift card. And then, the last but not least, if I can then ask Chief Cook, Lieutenant Jurnau, and Sergeant Lydian, thank you, Lydian, to come on up here. And we also want to recognize Gulf Coast for donating $1,500 to the UMBLE ISD Police Department Toy Drive. Just the most recent of many things that Gulf Coast has done. So because of all of this and much more, I am proud to present to Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union a certificate from the Texas Association of School Boards to recognize them for standing up for Texas public schools. So Ms. Conrad, Dr. Fagan, thank you for joining us. And would you all join me in thanking Gulf Coast for their support?
All right.
We have some items from closed session. Mr. Parliamentarian, if I can get a motion?
Yes, Madam President. As to personnel, I move that the Board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented with addendum.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? unanimous?
Also, Madam President, as to the consideration of student expulsions, I move that the Board approve the administration's recommendations for student expulsion as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor? That's unanimous. All right. Moving on to comments by individual board members. We'll start to my right, Ms. Dixon.
First.
Sorry.
Well, as a mother who has had four kids go through Creekwood, and my youngest is a seventh grader and friends with a lot of the kids here, Ian Dixon, I know somebody's like, "Who's, who's, who's that mom?" I am so excited for you guys. I really, really am. It's such an honor for you to be going to Midwest, and I love it. I mean, the entire, just all of the hard work. I've seen you guys play. I've been to your concerts with the orchestra, with the band, and you guys are awesome. So I'm really excited for you all. And good luck. I won't be there Friday. I'll be out of town, I'm Sunday, to see you, your send-off. I'll be out of town. But good luck to all of you. And that's it. Well, actually, one more thing. The middle school basketball tournaments. I went to the tournaments this past weekend, and I would like to say there was a lot of fierce competition. And those, all the kids from all the different middle schools, they play with such heart. There's tears when they lose. I mean, there's so much passion there, and I just had a great time. So I'm glad I was able to do that as well this weekend. Thank you.
Just to echo the comments, we're really proud of you guys. You've learned a lesson here, that hard work does pay off, and just want to congratulate you again and wish you good luck. That's really it for my comments. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Pass. Mr. Sitten.
Y'all ditto the, what my colleagues have said. I mean, the video was fantastic. Be proud. I know the parents are proud. But again, I say this quite often when we have students get to come up and showcase what they've done. That is the product of UMBLE ISD. That's what we do every day. That's why the group up here at this table ran for a non-paid position, is to make sure that we give opportunities to kids like that right there. And I tell you what, it's been exciting to watch at all levels. I mean, from debate at Kingwood High School to football playoffs. Kingwood High School made it to the third round, along with the Tascasita this year. Girls volleyball, Kingwood Park had a big run. I mean, it was just, it's really neat to see our students, our student athletes, our teachers, our instructors, our administrators excel, because at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. You know, when we brought Dr. Fagan in, her whole motive here was, "Let's be the best at what we do, in everything we do." And stuff like what happened tonight, that gives me, I take a step back, take a pause, because I think that's happening. I really do. And I want to finish my comments by wishing everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. As Jonathan's walking up, and I'll cue you in, I just wanted to also say to the, to our young future leaders out there, congratulations on a job well done. Walt, I like what you said, because after all, we are the best large school district in Texas, you know? And, and we're going to make it the best one in the world. But with that said, last week, not last week, last board meeting, I was up here and I talked about Gulf Coast Go Public. And I didn't have the video, had a little technical difficulties, but I wanted to show this video. And, you know, public education is somewhat under attack, but we know that we've got a UMBLE ISD family here, and we've got an UMBLE ISD community that knows public education is by far second to none, but number one. And so I want to share this video here. And just a little caveat, as the districts that are involved in this, UMBLE is going to be next, and so I'm going to be tasked with probably saying, "If we don't have any local big celebrities, we might just use Creekwood." So let's, let's show this, and this is being showed, and shown in videos, I mean, in our movie theaters. Started in November, we're going to run it again here in December, and then we're going to get another, another shoot running. But if you will, let's just show this gentleman that went to Klein ISD.
We live in a very diverse society, and in that classroom, you will have people coming from all socioeconomic backgrounds, speaking different languages, practicing different religions. But everyone is there to learn. In that, in that public school setting, you learn how to live. I learned those principles and those values from the public school system. I'm Houston Mayor Sylvester Turner, a product of the public school system, and I urge you to go public.
All right. We want to thank, we want to thank Sylvester Turner. As I said, a Klein ISD graduate, and then he went to some little school up north called Harvard. But, you know, I want to thank my board members when we first talked about doing this and, and coming together with the rest of the school districts in the Gulf Coast area. There's still 51 school districts. This is something that we need to be able to toot our horn with what we do with public schools. And so to my board members and Dr. Fagan, just want to say thank you all. And Madam President, I'm going to turn it over to you, but Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. It's a great message. Ms. Morrison.
Well, I want to congratulate you, Creekwood. Absolutely outstanding. I know you're proud of yourself, and parents, you're beaming. I can see it on your faces. Congratulations. Walt, you have one outstanding staff, one outstanding set of students. Congratulations. And I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. But I'm also going to piggyback a little bit on Mr. Cunningham's statement. Look what public school has done for us. We have some of the most outstanding students. It works. Go have a good Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Carney.
Yeah, Creekwood, that's an awesome job. Good job, guys. Really proud of you, making UMBLE ISD look good. So appreciate all your, your hard work. I also wanted to acknowledge once again, the administration. I know it's been a really rough last couple of months, so really appreciate everything that everybody's done to help navigate the tough times that we found ourselves in the last few months, with Harvey specifically. So I hope everybody can get some well-deserved time off, rest, relaxation, coming up. Hopefully, come back rested and recharge for 2018. So I wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. All right. I'll just add by, I have a question. I was wondering if your percussion ensemble has a name? Does it just call, or do we just call it, refer to it as Creekwood Percussion Ensemble?
Creekwood Percussion Ensemble.
Creekwood Percussion Ensemble, awesome. I know there's a lot of studies that, out there about how many hours of practice it takes to perfect something. You guys are probably getting pretty close to that, I think, by your comments in the video. So great job on that, and parents for enduring all of the, the practice hours and the taxiing back and forth, I'm sure. But I did, I did want to commend the directors, especially for just taking a chance and trying something new and giving the kids another opportunity that helps them to challenge themselves in a new way. And Walt, your, your campus is, has always been a great place for that, where teachers feel supported in, in those kinds of things. So we appreciate you always providing that type of environment and support at your campus. And then Mr. Houston as well, our whole fine arts department. So thank you to the administration for also realizing the importance of the fine arts. Do want to wish everyone a happy holiday. We won't see you again before we meet again. And my final comment, which just had to do with the snow day, because nobody said anything about the snow day, but I couldn't have been more excited than to get on Twitter that afternoon and just see how every single campus was incorporating that into their lessons that day. And so turned it into not only just a fun opportunity, but a learning opportunity for our students. So I appreciate our teachers, our staff accommodating that. Great day in history for us. And so happy holidays. I will move on to comments by the administration.
Thank you. And I have to say that that was a unique take on a snow day, but, you know, having lived in Iowa and Colorado, it's a little different there. And my kids were like, "What?" But anyway, it was, it was very fun. And I, too, want to give a shout out to all the many teachers throughout the district who took the opportunity and realized that all these students who don't see snow very often would want to go outside, and, and some principals who may have allowed snowball fights, which is strictly prohibited in other states, I want you to know, Mr. Winnicky. But, but in any case, with all sincerity, the Creekwood Percussion Ensemble is one of those lighthouse items where teachers take a risk and try something that most people would have said, "Oh, that's not possible. Oh, you're never going to get that. Why would you even try?" And we have the staff, and I've said this since I arrived here and had the opportunity to get out into our schools, we have the staff here that will, that sees the future of what's possible. And they don't come to the conversation with all the reasons why it can't happen. They come to the conversation with all the ways that it can. And they have the leaders that support them in doing that, and the people that say, "Yeah, I'll pay for the buses, and yeah, I'll do this, and I'll do that." That's what makes, one of the things that makes UMBLE ISD so special is because people do, they see a different future, and then they make it happen, and they work together to make that possible. So whether it's a snowball fight on the one snow day in eight years, which wasn't really a snow day, but we'll go with that.
It's powdery.
It wasn't, actually, but okay. I guess it depended on where you were. We'll go with, yeah, your definition. Yeah, okay. So, but in any case, it has been a very interesting fall for all of us. I think people have worked harder than I ever thought possible, and everybody has earned a very well-deserved break. And so I'm very happy to see folks throughout the district have that coming in the next few weeks, and I wish everyone happy holidays, and I hope you do have time to do the things that you need to do. Get some of those things off your to-do list, spend some time with people who are important to you, and then be refreshed for the new year. And as Matt Roser said to me when we were standing outside Kingwood High School where the water tank was on fire, "2018 has to be better than this." In any case, it's, it really has been a great year in many ways, because we've, we've worked together and done things we didn't think were possible in so many different ways, and that inspires us to a higher level. So happy holidays to everyone, and thank you to everybody who has served on our bond advisory committee. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, because that has been a really time-intensive, grueling process for many people, about 125 people. And they have stuck with it, and they have worked hard. And I just want to make sure I say a big thank you to both the staff who have supported the process, as well as the community, the parents, and the other staff members who have participated in the process, because it's been a lot of work and heavy lifting. And that committee will actually finish its work this Thursday, which is very exciting. So with that, I think I'm finished.
Appreciate that. That brings us to our consent agenda. So we'll roll, roll through those items. Mr.? Oh. Gosh, I was wanting to, I always got to skip something, just to make sure y'all are paying attention. All right. We do need our update on our board associations and committees. And we'll begin with our audit committee. Mr. Cunningham is our chair.
Audit committee has no report, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Our Board and Superintendent Evaluation Process and Goals Committee. Mr. Lopez.
We don't really have a report. We will meet, though, for an issue after this meeting in closed session.
All right.
Or as a committee.
We'll have an update following. All right. Our Board, Building and Planning Committee. Mr. Sitten.
Not a lot going on these days. We met for about three hours on November 28th, and we met for four hours yesterday. So just a couple of highlights. There are some agenda items tonight. You should have all received the minutes from both of those meetings this morning or yesterday. And so a couple of things that we're looking at, we're trying to narrow down the, the final location for the next elementary school. We were, we thought we were going to be bringing a recommendation this month, but it's going to be next month. So happy holidays to everyone, and thank you to everybody who has served on our Bond Advisory Committee. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, because that has been a really time-intensive, grueling process for many people, about 125 people, and they have stuck with it, and they have worked hard, and I just want to make sure I say a big thank you to both the staff who have supported the process, as well as the community, the parents, and the other staff members who have participated in the process, because it's been a lot of work and heavy lifting, and that committee will actually finish its work this Thursday, which is very exciting. So with that, I think I'm finished.
Appreciate that. That brings us to our consent agenda. So we'll roll through those items. Mr.? Oh, gosh, I was wanting to, I always got to skip something, just to make sure y'all are paying attention. All right. We do need our update on our Board, Associations, and Committees, and we'll begin with our Audit Committee. Mr. Cunningham is our chair.
Audit Committee has no report, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Our Board and Superintendent Evaluation Process and Goals Committee, Mr. Lopez.
We don't really have a report. We will meet, though, for an issue after this meeting in closed session, or as a committee.
We'll have an update following. All right, our Board, Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitten.
Not a lot going on these days. We met for about three hours on November 28th, and we met for four hours yesterday. So just a couple of highlights, there are some agenda items tonight. You should have all received the minutes from both of those meetings this morning or yesterday. And so a couple of things that we're looking at, we're trying to narrow down the final location for the next elementary school. We thought we were going to be bringing a recommendation this month, but it's going to be next month. Had a couple due diligence items we need to take care of. Got an update on Middle School Nine, that's also an agenda item tonight, which would be to, for the naming of the new school. We've asked Mark Wimberly, who we've used in the past to look for properties for schools, to start looking at properties for a potential transportation center, potential relocation of the Ag Barn in Kingwood. So we got kind of an update of where he was at at that point. Let's see, we got a bond update from Mike Seal, and let's see if there was anything An update on Kingwood High School, but basically very similar to what, what's being sent out to the community at that point. So that's, that's the Cliff Notes version. So you've got the packets, if you have any questions, let me know, and we'll get with Mr. Correa and get those questions answered for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sitten. Education Foundation, Mr. Carney.
Sure. The Foundation would like to thank Mary Ann Lopez and Annette Wood for coordinating the holiday extravaganza event at the end of November, and selecting the Foundation to receive the proceeds from the event. Was a fun holiday shopping event for our community, and we appreciate all of Mary Ann and Annette's hard work in putting the event together. Also, I wanted to announce that grant applications for the Foundation's Innovative Education Grant Program are being accepted now. The deadline for employees to submit their idea for a creative education project is Friday, February 23rd, 2018. Please go to the Foundation's website at umbelisdfoundation.org to learn more about this grant opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Finance Committee, Mr. Sitten.
Yes, Madam President, Finance Committee met on November 28th. I did mention my colleagues, Mr. Cunningham and Ms. Dixon, serve on the building and planning with me, so they really have spent a lot of time with me in the last few days. And then Mr. Cunningham and Ms. Conrad serve on the Finance Committee with me as well, and our last meeting was November 28th. Had a long discussion about the, really about several things. The administration provided a summary of the information presented at the September 28th, October 19th, and November 16th Citizen Bond Advisory Committee meetings, the deliberation process, the results, the preliminary results from the eight subgroups, and then discussion of the financing plan for Hurricane Harvey expenses. The, there's an agenda item, a couple of agenda items on here tonight that we're going to talk more, but we discussed the fact that though we hope to recover all the costs related through Hurricane Harvey, through insurance, FEMA, and state funding, as of the committee meeting date, the district had only received 6 million from the insurance company. Since then, we've received another, I believe, 7 million, is that correct, for a total of 13, 13 and a half million? And that's on a price tag of close to $100 million. So at this point in time, it is unknown if or when the remaining 94 million of reimbursements might be received. They also reminded us that FEMA made reimbursement for Hurricane Ike less than 30 days ago. Hurricane Ike was in 2008. So we're not, we're kind of hurry up and wait at this point. At the December, at our board meeting today, I'm not going to read this, because we're going to talk about it on a, we're going to pull it in a few minutes on the agenda item, dealing with FEMA reimbursements. And then the last item was the option to reassess post-Harvey property values. The administration discussed the financial challenges associated with requesting tax roll reappraisal of district properties to provide property tax relief to Hurricane Harvey victims in light of the projected 100 million cost for remediating District Harvey damages. There is another agenda item that's going to be talking about that shortly, but I'd like to make sure that the public knows, and that the board member, our board colleagues do understand this fact, is that while we are, we have to be stewards, good stewards of the public money, whatever we do here in just a little bit, we need to be empathetic to those that have been affected by the floods, and do what we need to do as a governing body, and at the same time, we need to make sure that we're continuing to be able to function as an entity and take care of our kids. So that's all I have.
Any questions? All right. That brings us to Ms. Dixon, our Kingwood Super Neighborhood Council Representative.
Well, we met on November 15th. Just a few major points that I'll point out for you. One, the Lone Star Tech Building at Generation Park, the ribbon-cutting ceremony will be March 6th, and they're hoping everyone comes out for that. Also, that particular committee, we voted for tiers to consider adding to their budget for next year, the synchronizing of the lights on Kingwood Drive to help with the traffic flow. It was a unanimous vote.
Yep.
And last, different entities, including Representative Huberty and Councilman Martin's office, and the Kingwood Neighborhood Council, Super Neighborhood Council, are asking Kingwood residents to support the San Jacinto River Corrective Action Petition. There are three major points on that petition for Kingwood residents. One is to add representation to the SJRA Board with the San Jacinto River Authority Board. Two, to have penalties for the unlawful deposition of sediments in the river, dredging of the San Jacinto River West Fork. So, you know, look for those, they're out there in the community, they're at Randall's in the morning, on the weekends, if you want to sign the petition. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Legislative Committee, Ms. Morrison?
Okay. The Chamber, the UMBL Area Chamber, will be sending a group to our nation's capital in the spring to work with our nation's legislators, and we've always had a representative, so we will have one to go to that. And also, I attended the IMPACT meeting at the Harris County Department of Ed, December 4th, and a topic that is being brought up is voting centers. I think it's been up before, but it's being discussed again, which could possibly affect us. Maybe our schools will be relieved of that, but that is a discussion point coming out in the next elections. They also announced that Harris County Department of Ed is opening their very first alcohol-drug recovery high school. They'll have 30 slots at it. So that is what I've got for right now. Thank you.
If no one's ever done the DC fly-ins or gone to the state capitol, I think that was my first experience advocacy-type trip, and it's, if you're fearful of that kind of thing, like I was, because it was unknown to me, they have such a great process and everything to follow, it's a, it's a great learning experience and a good way to advocate for our needs as a district, so. Well, that's on the Chamber website, and probably details on that coming up in the spring. Thank you, Ms. Morrison.
All right. Brings us to our consent, and now our consent agenda. We'll move through these items. Let us know if you need to pull the items. So we'll start with 4A, Minutes. 4B, Tax Refunds. 4C, Budget Transfers and Amendments. 4D, Ratify and Approve Interlocal Agreement between Harris County Department of Ed and UMBL ISD.
Pull that.
4E, the Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of UMBL ISD Maintenance Tax Note Series 2018 for interim Hurricane Harvey funding.
Pull that as well.
Item 4F, Budget Transfers and Amendments, including the transfer of FFNE from Middle School Nine Construction Project to Middle School Nine FFNE Project. 4G, Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services exceeding $50,000 in aggregate, or $25,000 individual. 4H, Naming of Middle School Nine.
Pull that.
Kind of have to, don't we? And 4I, Proposed Resolution Regarding Property Tax Reappraisal.
And pull that.
Also pull. All right, so we'll need a motion on the consent agenda.
Okay, Madam President, as the consent agenda, I move that the board approve the following items by consent. Item 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4G, oh, and 4F, 4F and 4G.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor? Animus? So those items are moved to action items, the first being item 4D, the interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Ed and UMBL ISD. Do I have a discussion? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second. Now I have a discussion.
I pulled this, Madam President. Mr. Correa, could you kind of explain to, we talked about this in building and planning, could you explain what the RS Means process is, so that everyone kind of knows what we're, what we're voting on here?
Basically, the Harris County Department of Ed, what we have asked is contract within the process of recovery, our money and things that we are being at our three buildings.
Kingwood High School, ISC, and the Welcome Center. And as we go through that process, it's entered into the RS Means system, which is a bidding process. That's how we do the pay for our contractors at Kingwood High, which is facility sources, and we make sure that those pay stubs come back correctly. So we ask them to help us with that, to give us someone who could help us review those pay apps, and that's where we are now. In going through that process and working with the Harris County Department of Ed, the person that they're recommending is Stephen Kendrick, who happens to be the son of Kenny Kendrick, our maintenance director. The minute we knew that, Kenny self-reported a possible conflict of interest with that. Through the process, we're not going to use Kenny as we go through that process in terms of reviewing those apps. They'll be reviewed with someone differently at the maintenance department, and then Shelley and I will approve those apps together. Shelley Vineyard.
Mr. Correa, the, the cost of the advisory services can be submitted for reimbursement through FEMA?
Yes. Yes, it will.
Other discussion?
Will we be paid, we won't be paying Mr. Kendrick's son direct, is that correct?
That is correct. We entered in a contract, we will hopefully enter into a contract with them, and then we will play, pay choice partners who in turn will pay him.
Any other discussion? All right, thank you, Mr. Correa.
Yeah.
Those in favor? Opposed? All right, next, 4E, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of UMBL ISD Maintenance Tax Notes. Do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, Madam President, Mike Seal, Mr. Seal, could you kind of walk the board through what we're doing here and why, for a second, please?
Mr. Sitten, as you mentioned earlier, we anticipate that we will, at some point, be reimbursed for at least 90% of all of the expenses we have associated with Hurricane Harvey. We believe we will do better than that, but the FEMA commitment is, as a minimum, they'll bring us up to that 90% point. However, as you also mentioned earlier, the timing of FEMA is not always the same as our timing. You have an agenda, I'm sorry, not an agenda item, but an item that I'll be talking to the Finance Committee about, maybe at the end of this meeting, that might speed that process up. But our biggest challenge is we have to cash flow those expenditures. All of the people that we have hired to do this work for us, to get Kingwood High School particularly, put back together so quickly, demand quick payment. They're not going to wait on FEMA. So we have put together a proposal with JP Morgan Chase, who is our primary depository, where we can have what will feel to us like a line of credit, where we can borrow up to $60 million if it's needed to cash flow these projects until we get reimbursement from insurance and from FEMA. Those of you who have been at this for a long time, or have heard in other districts, districts do what are called a tax anticipation note. This is a little bit of a flavor of that. It basically says to the bank, we need to cash flow these projects, but we'll be repaying you as we have tax collections come in throughout the year. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Just, just one. Madam President, on page 30, I want to say it's 32, I'm ready to vote and approve this, but we just need to make some necessary corrections. Page 32, that's a 33-page document.
If I may?
Yeah.
I would be with this if I didn't say, we, I'd anticipated all the full $60 million of that note, and then it dropped, and maybe $30 million of drop, which will be on here We want to build a safety net, cover us just in case, allow us to do more effective planning and investing as we report.
Thank you, Mr. Seal.
But I just, Madam President, just make sure that we note that we make those corrections. Move.
It is on page 32.
Yeah, 32. That's, that's all I have.
All right, so you have a motion and a second. Those in favor? Brings us to item 4H, Naming of Middle School Number Nine. Currently, the recommendation is, the secret, is to approve the naming of Middle School Number Nine.
So move.
Second.
I didn't know if we could make a motion, there's not a recommendation for a name.
Well, that's, that's, we pulled it so we can discuss that. There's the, the data points of the, the middle school name and the mascot, so we're going to need to vote on that based on these data points.
So we'll, we will have to amend our motion with the name of the, okay. So you pulled it, would you like to begin the discussion?
Yes. So look at the data points, the choices are, the top three choices for the middle school name is Westlake Middle School, 39.9%, Groves Middle School, 39.2%, Lake Houston Middle School, 20.9%. Looking at the, the area that this school is going to serve, it is really serving a lot of that Lake Houston Parkway corridor. My, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the, the surveys and approve Westlake Middle School as the name of Middle School Nine.
Is there other discussion?
Oh, we'll do that next.
Do we have to approve the mascot, too, or just the name?
Yeah, we have to approve the mascot as well.
Well, my only input on Westlake Middle School is, of course, we already have a WMS.
Yeah, too, too many ladders. I've already looked at that as well.
And it's really close between 39.9% and 39.2%.
Well, Madam President, I believe you made a motion for, we can discuss it. Can I get, need a second?
Oh, so there's, there's a motion to...
I'll go ahead and second it, but he wants to make the motion to go ahead for Westlake Middle School.
That's correct.
Okay, and so make sure we're all just...
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So current discussion is to approve Westlake Middle School as the name of Middle School Number Nine. Other discussion?
By what may, I mean, besides, as you're saying, with the Westlake Middle School, I mean, but it was 39%, so I believe that's, that's the majority problem with it.
Is that an administrative nightmare? I don't know. It's just, it's just initials.
Yeah, 17.
What could we consider? Sorry, Madam President. Could we consider, sorry, Madam President, could we consider combining the word Westlake into one word?
The issue with that is we already have a WMS. That would, because I looked at that as well. And, you know, I kind of looked at it from a couple of different ways. Calling, I know the Groves and Westlake are, they're close in the survey. And even though the middle school is in the Groves, it's pulling from Eagle Springs, it's pulling from Lake Shore, it's pulling from multiple areas along that corridor. And if you think about, one of our big partners now is, and this didn't play into it, but I thought about it because I'd already heard it. And that was, Generation Park was trying to brand that area, Westlake. And so it kind of fit some of that branding that's already been happening in that corridor. And that's, that's why I was gravitating towards that. And then I saw these numbers, and it works.
Is it okay to ask the current building principal what the input was? I know you held several meetings.
And then what on that number one mascot was the Wolves. So in light of those comments, can I amend my, my motion?
Sure.
So with those comments and with the discussion we've had, I'd like to amend my, my motion to name the new middle school, Westlake Middle School Wolves, with the Wolves as the mascot.
Westlake being two separate words.
Two separate words. Westlake Middle School being two separate words, and having the mascot be the Wolves.
Okay. So I have an amended motion on the table to approve the naming of Middle School Number Nine, Westlake Middle School, and the mascot is the Wolves. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Is that unanimous? Opposed? One abstention. Okay. I don't have to go back down a ladder or anything? Okay.
Before we, Madam President, before we move forward.
Yes.
Dr. H, welcome to the meeting. You actually have a name now. You're the Westlake Wolves.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that.
You're no longer just Middle School Nine trying to find a conference room to meet in. How about that?
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Now we just need colors.
Yes, they do. Lime and navy.
It's like the Seattle Seahawks colors.
Ooh, that's going to be one crazy duck in love.
But I'm impressed. Like I say, I'm already waiting to hear his name.
A middle school appropriate wolf. Okay, moving on. All right. Our last item here, action item, is 4I, our proposed resolution regarding a property tax We have a recommendation to approve the proposed resolution regarding reappraisal of property taxes following Hurricane Harvey. As it currently reads, whereas the catastrophic events of Hurricane Harvey have impacted and will continue to impact the community and taxpayers of Umbel ISD, and whereas the district's residents and business community are the lifeblood of Umbel ISD, and the continued strength of the district is inextricably intertwined with its community partner, and whereas a reassessment or reappraisal of property tax values impacted by Hurricane Harvey has the potential both to benefit members of the community and decrease revenue for the district to an uncertain degree, and whereas the district's storm-related costs are approaching $100 million and far exceed the estimated losses of any other school district in the Houston area, and whereas the district had only received $13,700,000 from insurance as of December 8, 2017, to cover the district's mounting repair expenses, and whereas the strength of Umbel ISD's financial stewardship allowed the district to cash flow and expedite the repairs to Kingwood High School, among other critical needs, while the district waits for claims to be processed by state, federal, and insurance partners, and whereas the Board of Trustees is committed to exploring all avenues which balance the board's duty to the students of Umbel ISD to ensure the continued fiscal health of the district, with support for the community personally and professionally as we rebuild together. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Umbel Independent School District, that should FEMA reimburse Umbel ISD for 90% of uncovered expenses related to Hurricane Harvey, or the Texas Legislature guarantee and commit funds to reimburse the district for maintenance and operations and debt service revenue losses resulting from the reappraisal. Umbel Independent School District, as the appropriate, as the appropriate taxing authority, shall initiate procedures for the reassessment of property values for all interested taxpayers in conjunction with the efforts of the Harris County Appraisal District. Superintendent recommends the approval of that proposed resolution. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Other discussion?
Madam President, several of us were at a breakfast this morning for elected officials, and we had the opportunity to visit with multiple officials on the state and federal level. While we have no, have nothing in writing at this point, visiting with Brandon, Senator Brandon Creighton, told him that we were going to be discussing a resolution tonight, and he is meeting personally with the governor on the 19th. So I will hand-deliver our resolution to him. He will in turn, provided we pass this, he will in turn hand-deliver that resolution to the governor, along with our, our needs at this point in time, in an effort to try to expedite some of this funding.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Other discussion? There's several other districts that have taken steps to either go ahead and order the appraisal or have adopted some of the resolutions as well. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Adopted. All right. And that is the last of our action items. That moves us on to number six, our information items. We have our financial services reports and our TASB policy update. Those are provided as information items this month. If anyone has any questions, I'm sure they could be addressed now or between now and our January meeting. That brings us to any future board business. Want to have any topics for future board business? All right. They're being nined. We are now adjourned. Stephanie, could you?